Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October, or welcome to the Thursday, October 16th, 2025, regular meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission. This meeting is held in person at the Parks and Recreations City Council Building, City Council Chambers. To provide a comment during the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk. You will have three minutes to make your comments. Please note that all commission time limits and rules of decorum will apply to public comments. This meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission is hereby called to order and join me in the hoes of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible, one liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. May we have roll call, please?
Chairperson Funes.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Here.
Commissioner Shahadeh.
Here.
Commissioner Furia.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Evans and Vice Chairperson Palma who are absent.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Are there any items or announcements from staff?
I have two items or announcements. One is that there is a planning commission training on October 29th. I will send you an email about it if you are all interested in signing up, and the topic is climate resiliency. And the second is that I'm sure a lot of the commissioners and members of the public have probably seen a lot of news about a new state bill called SB 79, which is about increasing densities around transportation nodes. It just passed, I think Friday, the governor signed it into law. So we staff is working on learning about it and learning if and how it will affect our city, and we will provide a report and updates to the commission as we know more.
Thank you so much. Does any member of the public wish to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda tonight at this time? Please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk.
We don't have any comments.
Hearing none. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public. He said no. So hearing no speakers, we will move on. Next on the agenda is the disclosure of ex parte communications. If any commissioner has had any communication with applicants to any site or projects, visits, and interactions with third parties, or has any conflicts regarding any item on the agenda, you may disclose them at any time. If you would like to accuse yourself for an item, you can do so at this time. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. May we have a listing of the consent calendar items, please?
Yes, we have one item on the consent calendar, which is consideration and approval of minutes from the September 4th, 2025 Planning Commission.
I make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Yes.
Commissioner Shahadeh.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Chairperson Funes.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans and Vice Chairperson Palma who are absent.
Okay, motion passes.
Does any member of the public wish to address the commission on an item on the consent calendar at this time? Please fill out a speaker card and give it to the clerk. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We have two members who would like to provide comments.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, Cynthia, are those, are those on item number two? Okay, so they're on item two. So we'll do that during.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, we got a little out of order.
Hearing no speakers, I later turned a motion on the consent calendar. Are we already to that? Great. And then, next on the agenda is item number one. Will the clerk please read the item?
Sure. Administrative business. The item is a report regarding consideration of an application for design review to construct four residential buildings consisting of four units at 616 Maple Avenue in downtown residential medium zoning district in accordance with Title 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code and determination that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Class 32, Section 15332. And Victoria Kim, senior planner, is going to give the staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'm Victoria Kim, project planner for six town home unit at 616 Maple Avenue. As you can see on the screen, the dashed box with the red is the project side, and then the nearest intersection to the project is Pine Avenue and Maple Avenue. And the project is very close to the South San Francisco City Hall, marked with the city logo at the left bottom corner. The project is within the transit station area and less than a half mile to the transit corridor. You can see it's 37 miles to the Caltrain Station, and also the nearest bus route location average of about 0.16 miles. The project site is zoned as a downtown residential medium, DRM, and there is currently existing one single-family residence on the site with the existing density for dwelling unit per acre. And the six-unit residential development will increase the minimum density to 25 dwelling unit per acre, and this development will infill the underutilized site by increasing unit and make the project property more compliant. And according to the general plan, the land use designation is medium density residential, which is intended for single-family housing, multiple dwelling units, townhouses, and condominiums. This is a current existing condition of the 616 Maple Avenue with two-story, single-family house. Here is a better view of the existing structure facing along the Maple Avenue view, Avenue, and you will see the back of the property along Hawthorne Place. Mostly it's covered with trees, grass, and vegetation. The applicant recently submitted design review application for a six-unit townhouse at Maple Avenue with open garage parking space. And this is the facade along Maple Side, and each building has one townhouse unit. And this is Hawthorne Place, the back of the property, and it will have another access to the property site, and each building has two units, so total there will be six units. The project architect is here to discuss more about the design and color and material later after the staff presentation. So the site plan shows a four structure. So again, Maple Avenue access from the left, and then Hawthorne Place from the left, and two buildings along Maple Avenue will have two units, and the four units can be accessed from Hawthorne Place from the right. I earlier mentioned that the project is within the half-mile to the transit station corridor. So the, according to the city ordinance and then California Assembly Bill, AB 2097, said that multi-unit residential development will do not require the parking within the transit station area. However, this project provides 10 parking spaces, including two enclosed parking stalls, and all these parking areas located on the ground floor level. And also, two long-term bicycle parking will be located on the ground level, and each bicycle parking area will have a two feet wide and six feet length. Here is a cross-section showing the entire project site. Again, six, you will see eight and plus two, but you cannot really see entire parking spaces, but mostly first floor will be utilized for parking, and the second and third floor will be habitable space area for the project. And here's some landscape plan with the proposed shrubs, trees, and plants. The project is in a developed property and also surrounded by existing residential buildings, and also there won't be more than six dwelling unit in urbanized area that this project is categorically exempt under infill development project category, CQAS Section 15332, and also And again, this is rendering of the Maple Avenue side. And here is Hawthorne Place facades. So the project complies with the general plan goal and policies, and also the development meet the DRM zoning development standards, and increase the unit will more compliant to the minimum density requirements. That staff recommends the planning commission make a determination that the project is categorically exempt and also approve the design review according to findings and conditions of approval. And this concludes the staff presentation, and followed by the applicant presentation.
Thank you so much. If the applicant is present, would you like to make a presentation?
Hello, everyone. I am the architect of the project. My name is Winnie, Winnie Tam. Thank you for Victoria giving a very good presentation. So actually, that covers most of what I already have, but I'll just go through it once again. I just have a brief, a brief overall description of the project. The, I have small icons to try to defenactuate, like the above. It's what is along Maple Street, the townhouses of two and a half, actually three-story at the back, while the front, we try to align it with the neighbor with two-story to make it run into the street view. So that is, the top two is the townhouses of three bedrooms and two-story, two and a half story. And then below is from the Hawthorne Place, while those two small buildings, detached buildings, but each building would have two condo units. It's like the ground floor is, at the back is parking, the front is like an entry lobby, and with stairs to go to second floor is Unit A, a condo unit, and then going up third floor is another unit. So it's two units in the small building. So altogether, we have six units for the whole project. Actually, so, let's see. Oh. Is it the arrow? Okay. Oh, okay, yes. And that, just briefly say, this is a downtown medium density residential zoning, and then existing, we only own 10,500 square foot lot. We only have a small building at the corner right now. And actually, that existing building, it's non-conforming because per planning code is too close to the poverty line and stuff, so we're gonna remove that. Yes, this is the aerial of the site, and the existing single building at the corner. And then the left, the left neighbor, the white neighbor, they are all two-story. So our proposal, it's, you can see the footprint is four small buildings, Maple Side, two building, and then Hawthorne Place, two building. The Maple Side, we have two townhouses. Each building is of one unit, while at the back at Hawthorne Place, we would have a stack of AP units inside that small building. The front elevation along Maple, two-story front trying to brand in with the neighbors' roof height, and then also they share a central one curb cut driveway, while the parking is at the back of the building, so it won't have, the street doesn't have a direct view into the garage and the parking. Rendering of the two townhouse units. And then this is the back along Hawthorne Place with the two detached building. Each one is second floor and third floor, it's of a unit, while ground floor is the shared parking. Also, central driveway, one curb cut, two-story front to keep consistency of the design style. Rendering of the Hawthorne Place. And then this is the site plan, where Hawthorne Place on the ground floor, it's all parking, six parking, and then we have the trash recycle and the, and the bicycle parking. For the front, it's just two, two parking for the whole townhouses each. And this is the section, because we have to do a cut and fill to resolve the fire coke access issue, which the fire engine could only access to rows that have 26 feet wide. So Maple, Maple Street is okay, but the Hawthorne Street, we only have 20 feet. So in order to have a fire access only on Maple, we have to do some cut and fill to have a level platform, so the fire engine and fire assets would all come from Maple Side with a level terrace that could reach all the way to the end of the Hawthorne small buildings for the fire access. So that is, that is the main thing that we have to do in order to, to answer to the new updated fire code, because quite some years back, we had some proposal that doesn't have that requirement. So this time, we work with, thank you for fire muscle ear that understand our situation and give us a solution to do the cut and fill to cover, to make sure that fire access works on this, on this project. This is the side elevation of the two building, and then you can see the level terraces that go all the way to reach to the H buildings. And actually, all the addresses have to be on Maple Side, so we have on the front, let me go, to, to the front of Maple, on the side, we would have the two gate labeling the address of the weird building, which also would be Maple, A and B, that, from the path that walked down to the Hawthorne Place. But of course, for regular access, the Hawthorne Place buildings have their own parkings and access lobbies and stuff on Hawthorne Place, and especially to answer to the fire, the new fire code requirement. So this is about what we worked hard to try to make sure this could go full again with all the current code, okay? If anyone have any question, or you can direct it to me, I'll try to answer.
Okay.
And make sure, because I'm deaf on one ear, so I try to make sure I can pick up exactly what you're asking.
Sure, no worries. So at this time, I'd like to see if we can get the speakers up, just so we can hear their thoughts first, is that okay?
Want the public speakers?
Yes, please.
Okay. So there's two public speakers. First person I have is Dave Rodriguez.
So welcome to the speakers now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dave Rodriguez. I live at 617 Maple Avenue, directly across the street from the development you're looking at right now. I'm a retired police officer. I was a police officer for 30 years, and currently the head of C-18 security for a major IT firm in the Bay, San Francisco area. My concerns are such that, we have two children, my wife and I, my wife Brenda and I have two children directly across the street. There are four children in that house directly north of the property you're looking at there as well, and two people, two adults. And we talked briefly about taking the building out that's currently there. The people that reside there are neighbors, Erica and her husband, and their two children, one of which is a young special needs child. They're both immigrants to this country. We worked really hard to make sure they got the proper documentation to live here, because they're amazing people. They're a wonderful family. We love that they're our neighbors. This would displace them, and they would have to leave the area unless provided a property, which, you know, is neither here nor there. We don't know if this could happen or not. Additionally, as it stands right now, we use, when we park our cars on Maple Avenue, because of the high traffic and the speed of the vehicles that travel in the area, we all, Erica and I and the neighbors, have to back our cars in, to our driveways, so that when we pull out, we can see the traffic coming, so, you know, the cars aren't hit. Before I left, I counted 18 cars on our street right now, as it is, with two empty spaces. This could potentially bring in excess of 10 vehicles just on the property alone, and any vehicles that are parked on the outside, and 16 to 20 additional residents just in that one little area, as it is, which could severely impact the neighborhood. So our concerns are that this is, while a beautiful-looking building and a beautiful-looking development, it's just too much for the neighborhood and too much for one block, especially since, given the area already is single-family dwellings, it's an established neighborhood. We've lived there for, we actually used to live in the house that is in that picture, until we moved across the street. We've lived here for almost 10 years, and lived in the barrier for the last 20 years. So that is what we are concerned. I would like to see this not happen. While I believe it is a nice development and looks beautiful, the impact that it's going to cause to the neighborhood is far outweighs the benefit that it's going to bring to the neighborhood. So I thank you for your time, and wish you all the best.
Next speaker is Brenda Rodriguez.
Hi, good evening. I'm pretty much following up what my husband said, is, you know, we live across the street, and there are neighbors. I understand one of the lots is empty, but they do live in that home next to it, and if it's destroyed, where do they go? There's no guarantee. The landlords can say that they would help them, but there's no guarantee, they don't have to. And they have two small children, and they've lived there as long as we have. To be displaced out of their neighborhood, that the little two kids have known, just feels so wrong. Like, what do we do as a city of, you know, South San Francisco to help those who get displaced, who get pushed out because the landlords want to build, which I get, there is an empty lot. But it's just too big, and it's just too much, and it displaces a family. And that's my biggest concern. I can talk about the construction and how annoying that'll be, or the amount of trash cans that will be there, but my main concern is the family that already lives there, and the two little children that grown up there. What do we do as a city to help those that get displaced? We just really, really need to like, okay, approve it, but what do we do? And that's my main concern. So I just hope that you consider that when you, whether, whatever decision comes of it, what do we do with the family that already lives there? It's so hard to find anything outside of here. We know that. Rent is hard. Getting into someplace that fits our income is really hard, especially to working families, you know, to working, you know, parents. So I hope you just consider that, somebody is going to be displaced. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask my fellow Commissioners if they have any comments.
Questions first.
Or questions, sorry.
Through the chair, can I also, I just wanted to mention that you have the comments that were, the ecomments that were received, printed out.
Correct.
And for the record, we received eight comments, and two of them, I did want to note, were submitted by the same person. So just for the record, all will be attached to the final agenda packet as well.
Okay. Thank you, Cynthia. Commissioners, Zhang.
Through the chair, I'm just asking questions. For condos, do they have open space requirement, or that kind, like, I don't think I see that probably going to be something. And second, I think I was gonna ask, like, not six garbage cans and recycling, like, is there any plan for that, or how does the city address that too? Because I don't think, yeah, anyway, thank you.
Yes, so to answer your first questions, so the city ordinance requires 100 square feet open space per unit, and then project will provide 912 square feet, unit for common and private open space. And you will see the calculation of open space from the staff report, Table 2, and then the open space are proportionally distributed from the ground to the third levels. And the second question you have is, I don't know, I can switch over to the slide, there is a site plan.
Can we have the staff presentation up, please? There we go. Thank you.
There's a site plan showing the recycling bin. Oh, here we go.
Oh, perfect.
I know there are a lot of information, but you'll, you see those three box-shaped-looking recycle bin next to the cars, like, for the Maple Avenue side, the second from the left on top, the middle kind of area with the cloud, I don't know, you can say. I wish there is like a pointer. That's a proposed recycling bin area, and the Hawthorne Place unit, it's next to the bicycle parking. There are like 12 recycling bins for four units, and during the pickup day, the recycling bin will be pulled over to the front landscape area, right next to the driveway. And then there are also another location for Hawthorne Place along the driveway, which indicate as cloud. I don't know, you can see it. Thank you.
Sorry, one more question. I apologize. So looking at this plan, so it looks like that's the hammerhead turnaround for fire trucks, so they come in there, do the T, and boom, and boom. So that's why, like, there's a T that is largely remain open, red zone, no one can park there, that kind of thing.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Did you wanna actually fire?
We can, we can also have questions regards to the fire part, because they did mention about the Hawthorne back and coverage from the front to the back. So I was along the same lines of how they plan to cover not only that, but homes on the other side of Hawthorne, they're behind it, so we have the coverage, because it is a narrow lane. I know they plan to put a fire lane in there, which would, but that's another, but seven, eight cars that'd be going out to the streets.
So Commissioners, I'm Fire Marshal Ian Hardage. Thank you for having us here today. So there is actually no onsite vehicle fire department access for this project. We cannot pull into the garage, it's not tall enough for us, it would only push the building further up, nor do we want to drive into buildings. All the fire department access for vehicle purposes is on Hawthorne and Maple. Hawthorne does mean. Hawthorne does meet, you know, all the lanes in the city have met very minimal fire department access, even to the point that we ordered specific engines with outlets on the back of the engine, so we didn't have to pull hose off the side specifically to our eight or nine lanes within the city. So this is why parking is only allowed on one side of the lanes, leaving a minimal access for fire department. With the buildings, with construction going on, not just specific to this project, but all projects, with the sprinklers being installed in the homes as required by minimum requirements of the state, we feel this provides, you know, the minimum reasonable degree of fire life safety and access, not only to the new developments, but maintaining access to the existing developments. The work that we did onsite is all ladder and personnel access to the buildings and to the rescue openings. So everything is served by the ladders, which the architect and design team had to make adjustments to meet our requirements for this project, and that's what you see here today. Does that answer your question? Any other questions while I'm up here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners have any questions? No. No questions?
I do have one regards to, when I'm looking at the plans here, it looks like the Hawthorne section, there will involve a lot of uneven ground, some construction, some taking, some movement of dirt to dig down lower for the parking. I'm concerned if this ever got approved, just the process of work in between those two streets, as materials are coming in, the excavation, if there's a set plan to be worked, if this should get approved, to cover, to minimize the impacts, which there'll be impacts, any kind of construction, but to minimize them if this project should get approved.
I try to make sure I.
My main question, like, on the Hawthorne section, from looking at the plans, looks like you have to dig down some, maybe look at the plan, maybe eight, nine, 10 feet?
No. Actually, this section, I try to show, that side, it's a slope side.
It's a natural slope side.
Maple side is eight to 10 feet higher than Hawthorne place. So actually, right now, there's a cut and fill, we try to balance it for cutting down to Hawthorne. I think the slope, okay, the side, slope, long way and also short way. So it's sort of, we try to keep the driveway in the middle, so that is kind of the cut and fill balance. And it seems the most we have to cut, it's around feet to four feet for the Hawthorne garage, and then whatever we have filled up to the Maple to make the level terrains for the fire access. So actually, the whole thing, I dare not say it would balance perfect, but I think the most I got is the, on the high side of Hawthorne, it would cut around four feet, three, eight to four feet. And then while the lower side, it doesn't have to cut. So we might need more fuel and compact to make the terrains from the Maple side. Otherwise, the cold balance, it's pretty much, hopefully, it doesn't really, it have to do the level terrains that way to, for the fire issue, but then actually, the whole thing, we try to balance it as if it won't be, hopefully, minimum disturbance or let more mud have to bring in, or I don't think we need to bring mud out.
Yeah.
It's really, we need to compact a little more on the Maple to give the level terrains.
Thank you. And the main purpose of my question for those listening at home and here is that the impact of, any dirt removal involves the equipment getting in there, the trucks to haul it out, and that was where I was going with this, because the minimal amount being moved, to me, is better than having to really do a major, which you've described isn't, which would be a major impact, we're talking a lot of ground removal. So that was the purpose of my question.
Oh, okay.
You've answered, thank you.
For this project, because of the cut and fill and the storm water management, our project, that way, requires 100% storm water. So actually, although we start with a small project, only a few units, but we end up in order to answer all the grading, all the storm water management, we have, you can see during our entitlement, even designing, not yet building permit, we have all the calculation of water and landscape to make everything, like, it have to have enough open land to absorb the water, and then they have all the piping calculation to manage to collect and how it drains and stuff. So that's how, it's the BKF, the main company, that's helping us with the civil and then working with the landscape architect to make sure everything works out with the calculation. So hopefully, that, try to minimize, I think, for disturbing to the neighbor by doing that, I think it's a, the work hour with control, we cannot try to do as much if it's not the hours allowed to do it. I think they, during construction, our general contractor, they have to control everything that is per city require that they could do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shawde?
Yeah, through the chair. I have a question, I don't know, for staff, or are they required to do any soil testing, testing the soil?
We have to.
You have to do that?
We already have the soil report. That's how they calculate, how to do the water collection and everything. So that was done almost a year ago, with, the geotag report is fairly far off, and we don't have much, it doesn't have to go down the water table, plus the soil are not hard rock, so when we cut, those are okay.
But in as far as support for the buildings as well?
Yeah, that would be required as part of the building permit process.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Commissioner Baker?
I know this is not really the planning commission's ballywick, but is there any, but we had the neighbors here talking about the current resident who's likely to be displaced. Does the city have any ordinance requiring relocation assistance or any, something along those lines?
I don't know the specific answer to that, but I would like to offer to connect the neighbors here tonight with my colleagues in the Housing Division, because we definitely have resources that can assist with displacement, and I don't want to miss this opportunity. So if I can maybe chat with the neighbors after the meeting and I can give them my card to make sure we connect them with the correct resources.
Great, thank you so much. Any else? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to close public hearing officially, turn over, turn the matter over to the Commission for discussion, so who wants to start?
I mean, I, I guess I can go ahead and start, yeah. You know, our primary jobs as planning Commissioners are to ensure that proposals meet zoning and other requirements. I think, for example, staff has demonstrated that this project is exempt from CEQA, so even if we wanted to, that part is not really in our discretion. I also don't see any particular individual health or safety issues, which are the other things that we can act on. So then I think we have to turn to the community needs here. And that's my question, a minute ago says, I, the planning commission really has no power to address the residency of the current occupants, but this does bring up the general issue of displacement in South San Francisco. And we've seen as jobs in housing have grown, jobs have grown much faster than housing, that the housing supply has fallen behind. South San Francisco has to, has had to plan for almost 4,000 units in its latest regional housing needs assessment to meet the current demand. This project adds a relatively modest four units. I think it's pretty much in scale with its neighbors. It was kind of ironic to see, read some of the E submitted comments about people wishing their kids could live in the city. Small projects like this make it more likely the kids can stay. I think this particular development with 10 spots has more than sufficient parking, particularly with the 130, which I ride a couple times a week past, down on Linden, a block away. That's sufficient. Someone in the comments asked if we'd like this building next to us. I mean, be honest, it's a good looking building, I probably would prefer it over my current But I just generally think I would support it, because if it helps people stay in this community, it's a good thing. More neighbors are a good thing. I understand the parking issue, but the displacement problem we're talking about, it's going to be a lot worse if we don't plan for the residents and employees that are coming in, that will otherwise outbid and outlast the old timers. So I, with knowledge that this is a hard choice for, especially for the people living there, I will be supporting this exemption.
Commissioner Zhang?
Through the chair. Thanks, Commissioner Baker. I actually echo a lot what you said, probably all. When I make decision as a planning commissioner, I really look at fire life, safety, privacy, any exceptions that we're granted, granting and stuff like that. And I do see this project had, went through humongous hoops to actually reach its state right now, because when I look at a section, I was like, who designed in the planning phase, like the fire ladder and stuff like that? Now that it's explained, like, fire department gave them a hard time upfront, so, well, I have a taste of that too normally. So in light of that, I would say probably the neighbors could talk to city council when, if this go in front of the council. However, like, since this is the comment part, I also understand that, sure, when the city needs housing and needs development, sure, I support the development, but not near me or next to me or in my friends' neighborhood, like, I do get that sentiment, but like, in terms of agreeing whether this big, small, like, everyone has their measure and standard. So us, planning commissioner and the city officials will base on the zoning ordinance, the playing, like, the planning codes, fire codes, to make the determination, because that is the most objective, objective way of doing that, doing things. So in light of that, subjective parameters, while I'm actually sympathetic, I cannot make decision based off feelings, so I will, I will make my decision not based off that, unfortunately, but I hope you understand I listen, but it's out of our power to do that. That said, I was about to give big claps to the architect, because like, I was looking at the plan, like, in case you can't hear me, I'm about to applause you for your solution, like, that's one of the most crazy approach to actually put four buildings, six units, and the fire access like that. I guess you didn't start off like that, like, you probably have to redesign multiple, because no one really designed things like that to start with, like, but I really think this solution is crazily elegant, so that's, that's as much as I'm gonna praise you on, but like, I really need to clap, like, center access, and all the developers actually have a choice, when you're in this corridor, you will just provide zero parking. And imagine neighbors having a six unit and allowed to have zero parkings for these, it will be worst nightmare. By doing parking, they actually have to spend more cost in building that for the neighbors. So I think developers actually did think about the neighborhoods enough that they have to actually add another floor to clear parking requirements, even though Subcity does not require them. So I hope, hope to also salute on that decision, because yes, the cut and fill and all those is making this construction cost really high too. So I'm very glad that the applicant is providing six new units here for us, so I'm supportive to this project. Thanks.
Commissioner Freya?
I pretty much concur with a lot of things my fellow Commissioners say. I do want to compliment Commissioner Baker, I do completely agree that with it, it looks like the residents will be displaced, that we, the DNI put them in contact with, at least we have resources they can go, because there again, we've made many decisions this body, and you know, that's probably the most painful part of any decision. There is displacement, anytime there's buildings being taken down, put up, it does impact people, and we're not foolish on that part of it. As for the building itself, I just say, I know what it can be like. I happen with my, I live in the South City, and I have a unit beside me where there's actually four families living in it, next to me, so I know the park, I know how the issues can go. But we've approved a lot of buildings like this, it's a beautiful building. A lot of buildings we've approved don't have the 10 parking spaces. That, for those who are looking for parking places, that statement is made as like a Band-Aid, it really doesn't help you, but it's better than some builders we've had. So again, I don't want to divert back to what has already been said by my fellow Commissioners, but I will support this project and have the empathy for those. And I want to thank the neighbors for coming forward and letting us know your feelings. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shawde, any comments?
Yeah, through the chair. I echo my Commissioners's comments, you know, my empathy towards the existing tenants in the house. We can always make a recommendation. Aside from the city resources, we can ask the developer to try to help them. It's just an ask, and they should be considerate enough to understand the circumstances. That's one ask. Second of all, in as far as the parking, to my fellow Commissioners, they're going to be selling these units. They're going to be townhouses and condominiums, so it makes it easier for them to sell them if there's parking. So, and it's an advantage to the neighborhood. I think the parking is not unique to Maple, it's throughout. I've lived in South City all my life, and we've seen it changing. I mean, I like the design, I, we have, and we're mandated by the city ordinances, by the state mandates, by zoning, and based on those merits, I support the project. Yes, yet I'm sympathetic with the existing tenants. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just gonna close out the comments. I want to say that I grew up in Redwood City and then moved up here when I was 10. My parents are both immigrants as well. My parents bought a condo in Redwood City in the early 1990s, and then they split and obviously community property, but being almost 35 and don't have any kids yet, I will say that is how a lot of young people, if they're able to afford to do so, that's how they're doing it. So reading these comments and knowing my personal history, you can understand how this is really difficult for me. But again, like, as the fellow Commissioners have stated, like, our job here is not to take our personal feelings into account, it's to make sure that what's zoned is appropriate for, and what's being presented to us is what we have to consider, not to consider and not our personal feelings so like I personally when reading these comments someone said would you like this next to me I live in Avalon Park I would love this in my neighborhood I would love younger people my age to be able to afford to start somewhere in this city that I call home I love this city I'm alive because of this city I was educated here from middle school to high school I love my city and I want people my age to have a chance at it and I have all the empathy in the world for those residents I am myself disabled so I get it but again like I have to support this project because that's what I have to do in this role as difficult and as hard as it is like that's the reality but I wanted to share all of that because there aren't a lot of people in planning commissions that are under 35 and that are disabled and women me and my fellow or my my co-chair are the only two women of color that have ever been on the planning commission that are under 35 which is entirely unique and she isn't here at the moment but I know she'd be feeling the same things right now so those that's why I want to close out my comments, thank you so if I can ask please for a roll call?
Can I just?
Oh, sorry, my point can I have a motion please?
Can I just jump in through the chair may I just make one comment I did a little phone a friend and tried to get a little more information about the displacement and relocation I texted our director Nelsi Lander there is a state law that we need to look into that that does discuss basically demolition of residential dwelling units and what is required unclear if it would apply in South San Francisco if it would apply to this project but I just wanted to say on the record for the commissioners and for the neighbors and for people listening at home it is something that we will research and see if it would apply to this project and also any future projects going forward so just wanted to let you know that we will actively look into this.
Thank you so much so can I ask for a motion please from one of my lovely commissioners?
Is it one motion or two?
Commissioner Shahadeh?
Two?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion making determination that the project is categorically exempt per CEQA guidelines class 32 section 15332 infill development projects.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Furia?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chairperson Funes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shahadeh?
Yes.
Commissioners Evans and Vice Chairperson Palmaque are absent.
Can I entertain a second motion please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion make findings and approve entitlement request for the project P 23-0086 including a design review DR 23-0019 subject to the attached draft findings and draft conditions of approval.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Furia?
Yes.
Commissioner Shahadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Chairperson Funes?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans and Vice Chairperson Palmaque are absent, motion passes.
Thank you, just as a note if any that any interested party may appeal the commission's decision. Is there any more? No, so ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide any comments on this item?
I already had them.
They're hearing none, great.
I just wanted to say would the city ever attempt with being displaced in this situation getting involved have those people involved in those kind of because you guys don't have you know that's not part of your role, I understand but that would be can we get them involved as part moving forward as part of what South City does I I love South City I think so I'm so involved in libraries and city events wondering and stuff like this when a family does get displaced because they're going to destroy and build a new dwelling is there can South City start get somebody involved to contact those residents I'm just going to offer help assistance in those situations.
Yeah, so in my role here I can't provide guidance but I would really love for you to speak to Adina this lovely human right there after the meeting she'll be able to provide us support.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much does any commissioner have any items or announcements wonderful thank you all so much for coming this meeting is now adjourned have a great night everyone.